... reserved space on the west side due to the Golden Murray Water Channel. A path on the east side will provide a path to cater for twenty-eight existing dwellings, a church and a motel. A path on the east side will also provide access to future residential development planned east of Howley Court and Johnston Road. The east path can be offset well back from the road outside of the safety clear zone. Path users travelling to Johnston Road and Howley Court can cross Deringgold Road roundabout where the traffic is travelling at slow speed to negotiate roundabout. The path on the west side would require a crossing at Ferguson Road to be constructed into land not owned by council. And the final point, the path on the east side may be able to run all the way to Pike Road, set back as a long way from the road, which would not be the case on the west side. Question two from Rod again, would council give consideration to holding public question time prior to general business to council? Yes, we would, and it's happening right now, so thank you for prompting that initiative, Rod. Question three is from John Gray, welcome, John. John's in the audience. Lengthy question here, John, but anyway, I'll give it a go. Arguably, the general streetscape in urban Shepparton in three sixty degrees centred on Carabot Park, Archer Street, would have to be the ugliest in Greater Shepparton. Your personal opinion, no doubt. The major contributing factor is the absence of vegetation, as that park seems to have been decommissioned as a venue for organised sport now for the better part of two decades. Would council consider the inexpensive deep ripping of informal discreet plots to incorporate clump planting of several hundred tube stocks of, say, grey box, which would have been the main indigenous trees in that area prior to European settlement? And you estimate a cost of that to three to four thousand dollars. A response to that, John, is that whilst that's a good idea and we encourage planting of trees, and you know we've planted one tree per child this year throughout the municipality, which was sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four, I believe, we, in this particular area, this area has been designated for, in part, for a retardation basin. So we may be able to plant some trees, but it is designated for other use. So I'll just read the response. The future of Carabot Park has not been determined in detail, but it has been identified in the St George's Road neighbourhood plan, which has been endorsed by council as an area to be improved for regular community use. It's also been identified as a place for a future retardation basin, which could be developed to allow for passive recreation to the community. So acknowledge what you're saying about the park, it does need a little bit of attention, but that'll be for future budgets to determine. Question four from John again, what are the conditional responsibilities on residential land developers in respect to street tree plantings and establishment care? We adopt the requirements of the infrastructure design manual, and it goes into detail in that manual. And council require developers to maintain trees for twelve months in short. Most developers elect to pay council to establish the trees, and they pay them two hundred and fifty dollars in lieu of doing that work themselves, and that covers the planting, maintaining and establishment of the trees. Now, I know you've noted that there's trees that have suffered a bit and died and not be replaced, and that happens from time to time, but it's a mixed bag. We can either plant them ourselves or get the developers to do it themselves. Current trend is for them to pay us to do it, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harriet. Item seven point one, councillors, on page two, we have a recommendation in respect to the proposed road closure or of part of Court Bowl in Marlborough Drive, Kaila. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion, please?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed on page two of the agenda.
As the motion, thank you councillor Hazelman. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Givenetti? Councillor Hazelman?
Very briefly, Mr Mayor, it's a procedural matter, there's been a realignment, redevelopment in that area, and the Court Bowl's no longer required, the road actually now continues on. So it's a section of the court that's no longer required to be a road, and this process will eliminate that.
Good, thank you. Councillor Givenetti?
I think councillor Hazelman has probably covered it reasonably well, but one thing we need to be mindful of is that with this process, we're actually giving back the, sorry, providing the owner of that land with his own land back, because he actually did provide that land for the purpose of the Court originally.
Very good. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Can I just say quickly that it went out for a consultation, there was five submissions and no objections, no submissions were from feral groups, so if anyone's...
Good. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For closing comments, councillor Hazelman? None? All in favour? Against? Motion carried. On page five, councillors, item seven point two, sale of three fifty Hudson's Road, Marion Vale and one seven nine one Tuchira, Andura Road, Andura. There is a recommendation on page five. Any councillor wishing to move a motion, please? Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll move the recommendation on page five, numbers one through to three inclusive.
Do I have a second to please? Councillor, sorry councillor, I couldn't see you there. Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion is self-explanatory in that these two properties are surplus to council, we're selling them, it's going to save us expense, and we're going to make a little bit of money out of it, and I don't think I can usefully add it any further.
Good, thank you. Councillor O'Keefe? I heard you then, but I don't think anyone else did. We have to lower that mic a bit if you can.
Can anybody hear?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, no, that's fine, I think councillor Olvarus has covered that, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Orisvari, any closing comments?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Councillor Hazelman? That was four, I presume? Yes. Item seven point three, councillors, contract seventeen seventy, MAV procurement, provision of parks playground equipment. There is a recommendation on page nine and ten. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion, please? Councillor Givenetti? What do you wish to...
Yes, sorry, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion on page nine. The council accept the MAV playgrounds...
Nine and ten councillor? Nine and ten, pages nine and ten?
Nine and ten, sorry, Mr Mayor.
Yep, good.
Submitted by the listed companies for a scheduled rates contract until November two thousand and nineteen.
Do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Givenetti, would you like to speak to that motion?
Mr Mayor, this is a contract that's been led by the MAV on behalf of councils within Victoria, and what it does is gives the councils a list of companies that we can buy our public playground and exercise equipment from. We have seventy-nine public playgrounds in the municipality and twenty-seven pieces of exercise equipment within public open spaces. We spend approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year on this equipment, and by having a bulk tender going out by the MAV will give us significant financial benefits when purchasing this equipment.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Patterson?
No.
Good.
Very well, thank you.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
I just want to reiterate that this motion does propose to deliver best value. The idea of joint procurements to drive efficiencies, financial efficiencies, many councils linking together to, will produce these economies of scale, which brings the price down. My only concern is that there's so many successful tenders there, which may dilute the goal of having economies of scale create a cheaper outcome. But I guess the only way to find out if it will work is to go ahead and try it out, and hopefully we'll end up with a fantastic evaluation report and more shade sales across the municipality where kids are playing.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Givenetti, any closing comments?
The only final comment I'd make, Mr Mayor, is that the contract is for three years, with a further two-by-twelve month extension option if required.
Good, thank you. Councillors, all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Page fifteen, councillors, on your agendas, item seven point four, the Australian Botanic Gardens Special Committee Instrument of Delegation and Returns Exemption. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move seven point four, Australian Botanic Gardens Special Committee Instrument of Delegation and Returns Exemption on page fifteen as a motion, thank you.
As printed in the recommendation, yes, that's fine. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Hazelman? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, it's fairly straightforward, under the Act, council is required to conduct review of any delegations to a special committee, as well as exemptions given to members of the special committee from the requirement to submit primary and ordinary terms. This review has been conducted and is now presented for formal endorsement by council as further recommendation.
Good, thank you. Councillor Hazelman? Any councillors wishing to speak against the motion? Councillors wishing to add comments for the motion? Councillor Summer?
I am going to vote for this motion, although we do offer the committee quite a substantial amount in funding, and part of this motion will remove their requirement to produce an annual budget. Now, I'm going to vote for this on the assumption that if we did require some kind of formal documentation, that we could request that and go over it in, like any other order process.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to comment for, against, sorry, the motion? For the motion? Councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Item seven point five, our sporting future funding round one, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Yes, I've got to move that. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion?
I can move that, Mr Mayor.
Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the motion seven point five, our sporting future funding around one, two seventeen to two eighteen, as listed on page twenty... I've got it on page... Oops, sorry. Revised, oh, sorry. As listed on page one and the revised edition, thank you.
Now, I think that revised copy is above my head, correct? It is, that's correct behind me. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Orisvari? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to clarify that council support our sporting community and encourages clubs and organisations to apply for funding. This ensures both clubs and organisations have the opportunity to grow and to have the facilities they need. There is an extensive list of recommendations, all who have met the guidelines and mandatory requirements.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I think with the amended documentation that we have, and looking at the screen above us, I think one of the changes was the allocations with GST inclusive. I think that needs to be clarified.
Well, just to be strictly clear, it's not an amendment, it's a motion we're moving in.
Yes, correct. Look, just in relation to reading through this sporting future funding, it's just amazing the number of people that are aware that council gives out money if you satisfy the requirements, and they're all worthwhile projects, worthwhile funding.
They are indeed. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Givenetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just reiterating what councillor Orisvari said, it's great to see such a wide range of sporting groups that have actually taken the opportunity to make application for some of these funding, for the funding that is available. We look at the successful applicants, we have Tuchira Netball Association, Shepherd East Footy Club, Shepparton New Club United Cricket Club, Kylas Park Community and Sports Club, Northern Eagles Junior Football Club, so quite a wide variety of applicants, which is great that we can support these groups within the community.
Thank you councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Abdulla?
Yeah, it's great to see that the council is supporting these projects. We all know that we want, we are aspiring towards becoming the sporting capital of Australia or of Victoria, so all these steps are in the right direction. Just small comment around the assessment. I noticed that some, that most of them are the minor projects, but at least one project is major, which is amounting to twenty-eight thousand or so dollars. It would be, I'm sure this is, this is going to be followed, but we need to ensure that there's some mid-project assessment and review as well, and just to ensure that the funds, the usage of the fund is on the track, is on track, and it's, and it's going to avoid any unpleasant surprises towards the end. It's, it's all about working together and having good partnerships, so it's just a matter of how we are monitoring the usage of funds.
Thank you councillor. I'll add my own comments to this. Look, our sporting future funding is a programme that I think fits in perfectly with, as councillor Abdulla just mentioned, our new sport, Sport City Precinct. I mean, we've put a lot of faith and a lot of money, rate pays money into that facility north of Shepparton, so this works in perfectly with that, with encouraging and helping and assisting sporting clubs become viable or remain viable, and hopefully expand and involve more and more members of our community in that sport. So they're my comments. Any other comments against the motion? For the motion? And councillor Councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Now councillors, we have item seven, no, I was saying seven, where are we? Seven point six, on page thirty-two, we have a recommendation. Any councillor wishing to move a motion, please? Councillor Orisvari?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll move the recommendation on, there we go. I'll move the recommendation on page thirty-two as a motion in relation to the reconciliation of the urban street naming and community facility signage policy.
Wow, well indeed. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Orisvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, essentially, this is following a, an election, we are tasked to review our policies, and this policy has popped up as being of no further value, so we're putting it before the council to revoke it.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton?
Well, the policy is also in legislation and the internal operational guide, so we don't really need a policy specific to this.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdulla?
Just a quick, quick comment, I think it's a smart move, because it's all about reducing redundancy in council operations, and the review and update of redundant policies, it takes resources, of every policy takes resources, so it's a reasonable step to revoke this redundant policy and gain some efficiencies in council operations. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against? For? Councillor Orisvari, any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Essentially, the policy that we have in place is superserved by the Vic Roads Guidelines in any event, so that's another reason for justification effective.
Correct, thank you. All in favour of the motion, councillors? Against? Motion carried. Now councillors, item seven point seven, the contract eighteen oh eight, Welsford Street Upgrade Stage Three, Knight Street Intersection in Shepparton. There is a recommendation on page thirty-four, but do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
I'd like to reiterate the recommended recommendation, please.
Yes, well, it's just your recommend, your motion, which is?
That the council accept the tender submitted by Morrison Construction and Tralal Limited for contract number one eight oh eight, construction of Welford Street Stage Three Upgrade, Knight Street Intersection for lump sum price of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents, including GST. Authoriser CEO to sign and seal a contract document.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Orisvari? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, this went out with a normal process of our tendering system, there were two tenders, it was extremely close, there was literally nothing in it. The winning tender originally was another company, they have since decided they cannot fulfil the contracts, so they'll be thrown, and so local contractors, Orsons, will be now taking out the contract and finished in eight weeks, hopefully, as planned.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Councillor Orisvari?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Bit of drama there. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor, just a small evaluation there, that it was very competitive and within a person's difference, so for the tender, there's never seen a huge gap there, which is relieving.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Abdulla?
Thank you, just want to clarify, yes, I'll be supporting this motion, but I would want to make a point that in all these contracts and the tenders, I've noticed that there's very limited competition, there was very limited competition, and now it just, at this stage with amendments, we've got only one supplier left. So basically, what happens is that when you don't have enough competition, the quality of the, of the project suffers because there is no, how should I say, not much incentive to, to, to have the projects that are, that are delivered according to the, you know, according to the time and scope commitments, but, so there's a possibility. With, of course, with such a small competition, council didn't have much choice, and now that jobs they had pulled out, we were left with only one, one, one choice. So that sort of restricts our ability to, 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 to drive the work in a way that we would want to. I think in future, it will be good if we can, if we can encourage or if we can somehow actively promote more competition in these areas, and especially with the recent construction project delays in Shepparton. Now, it's really, as a community representative, I would be very keen to have more competition in this area, and that will try better project schedule controls, and we'll focus on project excellence.
Good, thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item eight point one, councillors, on page thirty-nine, we have a recommendation in respect to the Greater Shepparton Greater Health Grants Round One, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion from any councillor? Councillor Summer?
I'd like to move a motion that the council approves the distribution of Greater Shepparton Greater Health Project Grant Funding for Ground One, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, of two thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars, ten cents, including GST, as listed below, as listed on page thirty-nine.
Thank you. Do I have a second to please? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Summer?
This is another one about grant, grant rounds, relatively new, and it seems to be getting off to a good start. It's a lot smaller than some of the other grant rounds that we have, it's favouring projects that deliver to vulnerable, disabled or disadvantaged groups, so even though it doesn't seem like a lot of money in the long run, it actually means a lot to the people that we're giving it to. So I'm more than happy to accept this, and my only comment would be that we need to be a bit mindful of the potential for overlaps into our sporting future, because everything seems to be about sports these days, which isn't a bad thing, but we need to be mindful of being more inclusive.
Point taken, thank you councillor. Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and look, there is probably a point of difference here with the age range, sorry, the age range and different activities that are listed, there's four grants that we had applications for, all of whom have addressed the criteria. I think, you know, it's really interesting to see the diversity there of what we're getting applied for, we've got, you know, some mature age participants, we've got the primary school parents club, you know, looking at better healthy eating habits, as well as, I think we also have a massage therapy, soothing for the Burnie Road School students, which I think will be, you know, wonderful and very beneficial. So I think these are the great things we do get to do, and I think it's important to have that bit of diversity and listen to what, you know, individual, particularly individual schools like Burnie Road, you know, require, and I think that will be a very, you know, wonderful thing for them to contribute.
Good, thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Abdulla?
I would just like to note that these grants are expected to have very positive impacts. Of course, these are small steps towards building a healthy community, and I'm very glad that Greater Shepparton Community has the support from the council that will help them better equip for their health and wellbeing. So, yeah, all small steps in the right direction.
Good, thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For? Councillor Summer, any closing comments?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All in favour, councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item eight point two, councillors, on pages forty-six and forty-seven, we have a recommendation in respect to the Hall's Community Centres and Recreation Reserve Special Committee's review of instruments of delegation and returns exemption. Any councillor wishing to move a motion?
Probably dragging the microphone this way, gave it away, didn't it?
Yes, slightly.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I'd like to be able to move the, the motion as printed on pages forty-six and forty-seven of the agenda.
A second to please? Councillor Orisvari? Councillor Hazelman? Do you wish to speak to...
Yeah, a couple of aspects, Mr Mayor, obviously, that the Act requires that council conducts a review of many delegations and exemptions provided to members of special committees from time to time, and that review has been undertaken, and the results of what is outlined in the, in the recommendation that has become the motion. And some of those changes relate to relatively minor name changes, but I think what is interesting to note, that the people who, these committees, they're actually delegated to manage council facilities and properties on behalf of council, and I think from time to time, the contribution that these people make, it's, it's probably undervalued and taken for granted, and the list of facilities on, listed on page forty-seven is quite extensive, and it's appropriate that from time to time, the council does undertake such a review.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Orisvari?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Back to you councillor Hazelman?
No, I'm fine, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item eight point three, councillors, on page fifty-three and fifty-four, we have a recommendation in respect to the section eighty-six Special Committees, Committees of Management Memberships. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Givenetti? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page, pages fifty-three and fifty-four as the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Givenetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As part of our corporate procedure, oh seven, it's a requirement that any changes to the section eighty-six committees need to be approved by council. What we're doing with this recommendation is approving six members to be appointed to the Duke Recreation Reserve Community Centre Committee of Management, four members to the Kylas, sorry, five members to the Kylas Recreation Reserve Committee. We acknowledge the contribution of Mr Matthew Walker from the Lemnos Recreation Reserve Committee of Management, and accept his resignation, and we send his membership accordingly, and also thank him for his service, and we resolve that all members of the Duke Recreation Reserve and Community Centre Committee of Management, Kylas Recreation Reserve Committee of Management, Natalia Rupner Recreation Reserve Committee of Management, continue to be exempt from the requirement to complete interest returns in exercise of power granted to council under section eighty-one, two, over lawful government act.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Patterson, would you like to add anything?
Oh, yeah, I won't take much time up. The world's spoken long and hard about the poor and hard volunteers, they do, good people stand up for their community and do their bit, and it's proved they do, they can, would probably all living out of the government's reach, so, thank you for those who stand up on behalf of the community.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Back to you councillor Givenetti, if any comments...
I think we've covered it adequately.
That being the case, all in favour councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item eight point four, Community Arts Grants Round One, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we have a recommendation on page fifty-nine and sixty? Arts Grants Round One 2017-2018, we have a recommendation on page 59 and 60, if I'm correct. Do I have any councillor wishing to move a motion? Oh, sorry, councillor Summer, couldn't see from the microphone. Thank you, councillor Summer. What do you wish to move?
I'll move the recommendation, as it's printed, that the council approve funding for the following projects in Community Arts Grants Round One 2017-2018, and that applicants there, as listed, are the Shepparton Theatre Arts Group, Westside Circus, Awaken Dance Theatre Company, and St Paul's Lutheran Church.
And, other page?
And the Shepparton South Community Centre, as listed on page 60.
Yeah, that would be very upset if you forgot them.
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor. Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Summer?
Once again, it's a relatively new grant process, and one that I fully support. I think if we're going to have a standalone magnificent art museum, then it needs to be supported by the grassroots of our community. Otherwise, without community driving the cultural change towards arts, that project is likely to fall over and not be nearly as good as we expect. I've been a long time fan of Stag and the GV Concert Orchestra, so it gives me great pleasure to move that we should award $2,500 towards Duki the Musical. Yeah, I would say that it's put, it's going to put Duki on the map, but I think Duki's well and truly already stamped itself on that map. Basically, it's a play that was developed and produced and directed by John Head, who is performing this with local talent, and it actually has score from a local called Wade Gregory, who does a lot of classical music with the GV Concert Orchestra. So, it's going to be brilliant, and I do encourage everyone to get along and see what Greater Shepparton has to offer.
Was that a paid advertisement, councillor?
Yeah.
Very, very well done. Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I agree fully with councillor Summer. The applicants contribute to our community, supporting creativity, and encourage participation in arts and culture activities for individuals, groups, and the broader community. The assessment panel reviews each application based on the given criteria, and each project has listed their objective and outcome, and I congratulate them on their contribution to the community, and I also enjoy many of those participants' performances in recent times.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson? No, sorry, I thought I was... That being the case, back to you, councillor Summer.
Pleasant comments.
Yes, please, if you have some.
I would love to see this extended. It's still only half of what we offer with our Sporting Future Grants, and I do hope that since we have, we are building a facility, that the grant scheme should equal that of the Sporting City Facility also.
Good, thank you. All in favour, councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item 8.5, on pages 68 and 69, Community Matching Grant Scheme Round One, recommendations for approval 2017-2018. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the motion, please? Councillor Gervinetti?
What would you like to move, councillor Gervinetti?
Oh, sorry, Mr Mayor, councillor Sutton was showing me something, I thought I'd better read it. I'd like to move the, the recommendation as a motion on page 68 and 69, that the council approve the recommendation of the grant review panel to fund 15 projects as detailed below to the value of $31,727.50, representing round one of the 2017-18 of the Greater Shepparton City Council Community Matchin' Grant Scheme.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton. Now, councillor Gervinetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, as councillor Summer has mentioned earlier, this meeting is all about handing out money to the community, which is an important part of council's role. The organisations that have been successful through, through this process will provide significant benefit to their communities with the programs that they have made application for, and it can only be of significant benefit to the municipality as a whole.
Good, thank you. Councillor Sutton, do you wish to add anything?
This, this matching grant scheme started in 2011, and it's designed to support projects from the Greater Shepparton community, which build social connections and partnerships, or reinforce those that already exist. And it allows participation in the community activity at all stages of the project, from planning to completion. And also, community members can acquire, develop new skills, and create or renew revitalized places and spaces within the community. For example, the convent in Tatura, they're doing a business case to resurrect that, and I think that's a great idea. Hoppy Association is getting a storage container. So, there's lots of, lots of things happening, lots of money we're giving away, which is a good thing.
Good, thank you, councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer, do you wish to speak here?
Oh, yes. In regards to giving away money, it's basically doubling the value of a dollar. So, we offer some money, but we're not just saying, here, take it and do whatever you like with it. We're trying to empower the community to stand on their own two feet in a way. They have to be accountable for that money. There are forms to fill out once the money's spent to prove that it has offered value to the community. And we couldn't do all this work. We couldn't go out there and purchase defibrillators or do cultural bus tours on our own. We wouldn't be able to identify that need. Whereas, if you go from the bottom up, these guys know what's going on in the community, they know what's needed, they come to us with an ask, and then we can provide that. There's no way we could have the resources to do all that without the community. So, thank you to everyone who actually applied for this grant.
Thank you, councillor. Any councillors wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. For those in the audience that probably have currently had their first council meeting, it's not always like this. We don't just sit here and remove and give away money. We'd love to, because we'd like playing hands, especially if I am, I'm a little bit late. Basically, there's rounds of grants that happen probably twice a year, and this is one of them. So, don't go home and start swearing in council for giving away your important, great pay of money. It is, as I said, twice a year this will happen, and they're all good grants, they're seeding grants. They're used basically to help people get moving, not paying for the whole event generally, we're just giving them some funding. They usually have matching funding that will allow them to have that event up and running. And the idea of it is that once we're done, once we don't need to do that group again, they now have the ways and means and finances to do it themselves. So, please don't go home and think, well, I'm not giving this argument, all my money away. I think that's unkind. Yeah, so that's basically why we do it.
Thank you, councillor. If they weren't thinking that before, they are now. Thank you. Now, I reiterate councillor Patterson's words, this is, happens every couple of times a year, and this is just a great night that we are showing that we are giving back to the community. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion, sorry? None? For the motion? Councillor Orizvari?
We've been talking about, we've been talking about giving away sums of money. There's a couple of, the thing that attracts me to this particular motion is that some of the things that we're giving money away for really shows how people are quite innovative. The Life Saving Victoria, which is an aquatic survival program for Shepparton youth, I've lost track of the number of people over the years that have drowned through the, through the fact that they simply cannot swim. It's absolutely staggering the number of people that cannot swim in this day and age. The Duki, one where we're creating a lifestyle development folder to give new residents an idea of what actually Duki has for them. I mean, it's just, it's really to be encouraged as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against? For?
Closing?
All done. Closing comments, councillor Gervinetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I certainly endorse everything other councillors have said. It's actually very good to see the Lions Club of Maribou have been given a grant of $2,250 for a mobile community defibrillator machine. That's very much for councillor Patterson, if he should have the chuckle wobbly at the Lions Club meeting, he can be jumpstart, quick and smart.
It's almost a conflict of interest, councillor Gervinetti. Thank you for that. Thank you, councillors. All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Now, item 9.1, councillors, on page 80, we have a recommendation in reference to the Greater Victorian Commonwealth Games bid, the formal commitment. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move motion 9.1, Greater Victoria Commonwealth Games Bid Formal Commitment, recommendation being that the council, number one, support the preparation of a pre-feasibility study for future Greater Victoria Commonwealth Games, continue to assist in the coordination of this project, including managing the various financial contributions for the pre-feasibility study, as listed on page 80.
Thank you, councillor. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Abdullah? Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. There's been a lot of hype around this announcement, and it has attracted national and international interest, and has put Greater Shepparton, I believe, on a platform of being innovative and proactive. I have experienced firsthand the positive reaction and recognition this project has given Greater Shepparton. Last month, I attended a conference in Sydney, a business conference, and when I actually mentioned on the stage that I was from Shepparton, one of the comments from the audience was, oh, yes, that's the town that's actually looking at the, putting up the bid for the Commonwealth Games. So, that was nice to see Shepparton put in such a positive light and recognize, you know, interstate, and really, really positive feedback, which was great. I also believe it's going to improve our opportunities for other events, in particular sporting events. We're already attracting international and national events. This project is revolutionary, and it's not just about Greater Shepparton. This is about the whole of Victoria coming together to create something very special, a legacy for regional areas. I fully support this recommendation. I know it's a long way away, and I'm sure I'm going to be around, hopefully, to see some fruition.
I hope so, too, councillor. Do I have, councillor Abdullah, do you wish to add some comment?
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very proud to see Greater Shepparton has taken initiative, and it's leading regional, the regional areas in this bid. And as councillor O'Keefe has suggested, has mentioned, that it's a very positive story for our region, and, and I agree that a lot of people that I've met since this announcement have now been asking about this project, and they now know about Greater Shepparton in a way than before. So, it's a good, a good step. The other thing is that I, I really hope, and I do hope, that the project momentum is maintained, and we are enthusiastic throughout this process, because it's a long process, and we just need to, to be supportive and to be positive around this. Yep, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer?
I do want to admit that initially, I was a bit sceptical about this, but the more I hear about it, the more it does make sense. The idea is to spread infrastructure. So, instead of overspending on one great big Colosseum stadium, and then never using it again for, until the next game's bid in 100 years, we can actually use the kind of facilities that are spread out across regional Victoria, and not have that overspend left to ruin. So, not only does it make theoretical sense, it also makes economic sense. Now, initially, I don't think anyone really expected this bid to draw so much attention. We did have some backlash, and probably a little dose of envy from other regions who wished they got in first, but, yep, bad luck. At the, it was just to launch what we did before, and now we're getting into the details. So, it's really up to surrounding councils whether they want to be involved and contribute to this. It's turned out to be an amazing investment, just the launch itself, because we gained about $1 million in marketing just from the launch. So, we were in the hairwood sun, we were on the radio, TV, newspapers, everywhere. And we couldn't have, well, we could have spent that money, but in order, like, it's actually given us a positive reputation, instead of always hearing about the bad things about Shepparton, we've suddenly become the potential hub of the Commonwealth Games. So, that's, that's a great outcome, and I think we've got a chance of winning it. Got to be in it to win it.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Summer. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Sutton?
This is a really exciting time for Greater Shepparton, I believe, and we've got a really high-profile task force that's been appointed, that are going to do a great job for us. It's a one of, it's a first for the Commonwealth Games bid, having it shared amongst the region, and it's a first for Greater Shepparton, and I think it can only do good for Shepparton. It shows Shepparton in a positive light rather than the negativity that's surrounded it before. So, let's hope we win.
Good, thank you, councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against again? None? Any councillor wishing to speak for? Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, I'm excited about, like, we all are. What I'm more excited about than the else, though, is the legacy to leave. If we are successful, we're going to have a legacy of up-to-date rail, an airport, we're going to have great freeways, great highways, and we'll lead to port of state and federal governance if we are successful. When I say we, I'm talking for Reef of Victoria. We have the potential for Reef of Victoria on the map that basically ever. We'll have the infrastructure there that's been denied for us for so long. It'll be there. We can continue to utilize it, we can use it for our industry, our education, our sporting industry. And that's what I'm excited about, the legacy of the event when it's completed, apart from the magnificent time it will be for all of us that are still alive. Perhaps start walking while we know that, at the actual time, but at the time of the Reef of Victoria. And I'm not just not talking of Shepparton, it is Reef of Victoria.
Thank you, councillor. Good?
Very excited about it.
Marvelous. Any councillor wishing to speak against? I think we've all spoken. No? For the, for the motion? No? Good. Well, I'll add my final comments. I am actually part of the, the task force, and I can say from my personal experience, we've got some luminaries on this task force, me excluded, obviously. We have people like Eloise Pratt, who's, you know, a philanthropic giant in this country. You've got people like, well, obviously, sports people, John Stephenson, fantastic, positive, passionate guy. We've got the honourable Jeanette Powell as well. We've got people representing major businesses in Australia, who have got some real pool corp, in the corporate world. Nick Holland, obviously, if you're Barry for Hawthorn, you probably remember Nick, fantastic guy as well. So, we've got some great, powerful people there. But this motion is in regard to supporting the pre-feasibility study. That must be completed before we can enter into a proper feasibility study. That could cost between $2 and $3 million. Now, the state government wants us to do a pre-feasibility first. This motion just sets that in, in, sets a framework up for that. We're well on the way to achieving that target, and we hope in the next month or two, we can come back to the community and say that's been achieved. That will be conducted, and that will feed into the, the real feasibility study, if that comes out positive, which I'm sure it will. And as all the other councillors have alluded to, ultimately, if this gets up and gets running, it will be a, an absolute major change, well, economy, lifestyle change in this whole region, Greater Shepparton, obviously, but also regional Victoria. So, I support the motion 100%. Councillor O'Keefe, I think any closing comments from you?
Just pretty much, I was going to say the caliber of the comedian task force obviously is outstanding, and also acknowledging that the Pratt family, and obviously the Sarley family, Reddick Sarley, have grassroots here and family history. So, in speaking with Eloise Pratt, myself, she was very, really thrilled to actually come back to her grassroots here, and, and we did sort of revisit some of her history here. So, I think that's a real positive force, drawing force from, from her behalf. So, yes, very excited, and really looking forward to what the future holds in this space.
Great, thank you. All in favour, councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.2, the Domestic Animal Management Plan results for 2013 to 2017. We have a recommendation on page 85. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
I'll move the recommendation as a motion, as listed on page 85, which is that the council, one, endorse the evaluation report outlining outcomes and achievements of the Domestic Animal Management Plan 2013 to 2017, and two, note the evaluation and its implementation in the annual report.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Orizvari? Councillor Summer?
Well, this is terrific. I remember back in 2003, when we were working on this, and we worked very hard. It was during a period of council where there was a bit of backlash in the community around how our animal management was being led. At the time, there were animal rights groups trying to promote a picture that was leaked from the pound of a dog that appeared to be injured. Now, I remember the mayor spent days responding to emails to that regard, and to see how far we've come from that day to now is just so pleasing. We now work with animal rescue groups, which has really helped our euthanasia rates, and we're always looking for improvements. So, in order to point out how difficult it was to go from there to here, it's actually a philosophical and cultural change. So, not only can you see in the results that we have a significant reduction in euthanasia and a considerable increase in animal adoption, all across the board, we have made improvements. We've now got an off-leash dog park, and an off-leash dog park committee that's looking for additional parks, we developed and promoted a de-sexing subsidy scheme, we've recognised that registration is an issue and we're continuing to try and make improvements in that area. But I am so happy that we've come in, we've recognised that there was a problem and we've come, we've got an outcome that is just the bee's knees, so I'm really happy.
Bee's knees, marvellous, thank you councillor Summer. councillor Oris Vary?
We need individual microphones, I'm telling you. I'd just like to reiterate the comments made by councillor Summer, in particular, I remember when I got elected on the first, the thing that really struck me was the way that we were just, literally just euthanising animals left, right and centre and that's one of the things that really stuck in my craw. If statistics are to, or graphs are to be believed, you just have to look at both through the dog and the cats in terms of both rehousing and the euthanasia rates have dramatically, the euthanasia rates have dramatically reduced, the rehousing has worked, the facilities that we have now are really well maintained, looked after, funding is being put to them, also councillor Summer mentioned that we're working with animal protection groups and things of that nature, these things are all positive, I think that the one remaining area that we have ongoing issues with are actually the owners. The owners of animals fail to take that fundamental responsibility that a dog or a cat is a lifelong commitment and as a longstanding dog and cat owner, I think that, it really distresses me when I see people just letting, A, dogs wandering around the place and secondly, not having them on a leash and thirdly, getting all indignant when their dog rushes up and attacks somebody and gets a short sharp shift in return. That's all I have to say.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Patterson?
Yes, I think councillor Vary and the other councillors summarised perfectly, the major rates have dropped dramatically, they're probably where they need to be though, it's the same, there is a need to put some dogs down, some of these dogs are diseased and ill and forget them and some are too dangerous to be in our community. I've issued with dog owners that get a dog like that, I think we all, they don't deserve to have a dog and probably the dog wears the responsibility rather than the owner. You can't use an owner's owner, so we can't do it for dogs or the dog, sometimes you'd like to do it the other way around and give dogs some love we just never had and look after properly, they don't do that, it's very unfortunate, there's nothing we can do about that. So, I really do want to congratulate the, the staff out there, they've done a terrific job, it was an issue, as councillor Summer said, it was a real issue, we were just getting dogs in, putting them down willy-nilly, now, there's a lot of work goes into refinding them, the dogs are playing, numbers have gone up, dogs rehoused has gone up and dogs euthanised have come down to about ten per cent and a lot of that ten per cent are killed off, so I think it is about where that should be. Yeah, again, I'd like to congratulate the, the staff, I know you may have done some job that I've done.
Marvelous, thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? I was going to ask against, but I'm sure there's no one here to speak against the motion, is there? councillor Hazelman?
It's a, it's a pretty hard motion to speak against, it's a particularly good story. It wasn't a good story though, back in two thousand and thirteen when this management plan kicked off, the, the public perception of our performance in this area was, was very poor and the statistics backed up that perception, but the strategies that were implemented and the resources to go with it, the, the training programmes that were, were applied, have seen a remarkable result, we've seen through identification through microchipping that substantially increasing the number of animals that are claimed and returned to their homes, we've seen a very proactive rehousing programme, which if those two programmes work particularly well, it is obvious then that we're going to see a corresponding decline in the number of animals that are euthanised. And I think some of the statistical data and the graphs that are in here, it's quite stark to see the change that's occurred over that four years, so it hasn't come without some expense, but I'm pretty sure that the community would be very comfortable with the level of expenditure to achieve these sorts of results.
Indeed, thank you councillor, I fully agree with your comments there, let's hope those euthanasia numbers just keep getting viral and viral as well. Any other councillor wishing to add comment for or against? councillor Summer, you're looking very pensive there, you want to have some closing comments?
I would like to have some closing comments, just in regards to a couple of comments here where councillors mentioned we were putting them down willy-nilly or putting them down left, right and centre, that's not quite accurate, I know that that was the perception, but we were following legalities and we certainly didn't do anything that wasn't above board, but just because something's legal and we're following a procedure doesn't mean that we can't.
Do it better.
Have room for improvement and to go above and beyond, so we've done that and I'm very proud, I think it's a doggone effort.
Thank you councillor. Oh, yes. All in favour, I've lost my train of thought with that last comment, thank you. Against? Motion carried, thank you. Item nine point three councillors, on page one oh six, we have a recommendation in reference to the Shepparton Shamy Committee, Instrument of Delegation and Guidelines Committee delegations, do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion please? councillor Oris Vary, thank you, what would you like to move?
I'll move the recommendation on, thank you, I'll move the recommendation on page one oh six, items one to four inclusive.
Marvelous, do I have a second please? councillor Patterson? councillor Oris Vary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you for the offer, Mr Mayor, as a long-term councillor on this committee, the, the delegation in relation to this has been revised in terms of the Shepparton Shamy guidelines, the item four in particular, where it says the relevant provisions resolve that local law two doesn't apply to the conduct of meetings of the Shepparton Shamy Special Committee essentially means that we don't run the committee meetings as we do council meetings. The other issue that was, has arisen is that previously, it used to be the case, Mr Mayor, as you would know, that there was a requirement for the chairperson to be filled by a councillor, but instead now we can have a business owner who is elected to that position and there is also going to be the additional council officer appointed to the committee, together with the provision of an annual and biannual report for animal, and that last particular point adds a degree of comfort to the fact that there is a good governance in terms of the committee itself.
Indeed, thank you councillor. councillor Patterson?
Ah yes, councillor Vary summarised it very well, this is pretty similar to the last one, actually, first of all, it's one of these issues we have to look at the twelve months of a council election, which we're currently doing, also, you know, we can all remember, three, four, maybe five years ago now, Shepp Shamy was in a bit of, you wouldn't call it turmoil, but it was probably not working that well with council where it's turned the corner last few years, working very well and I congratulate people who put their hand up.
Thank you councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Back to you councillor Oris Vary for any closing comments if you wish?
Uh, no, I think that's been covered, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. All in favour councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item nine point four councillors, update to asset valuation and revaluation policy, zero three, point pole four, we have a recommendation on page one hundred and ten, do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion please? councillor Jiven Eddy?
Thank you, Mr, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page one hundred and ten as a motion that the council adopt the updated asset valuation and revaluation policy, zero three, policy four.
Thank you, do I have a second please? councillor Oris Vary? Thank you councillor. councillor Jiven Eddy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, Mr Mayor, this is a procedural process, what we're doing is making some minor amendments to the current asset and revaluation policy, we're changing the way that we depreciate some of our, our assets and amending the wording to make it more clear, we're saying that we, we need to refer to it as a straight line method of depreciation, which is the actual length of time that the actual asset is going to be serviceable for us. That's about it, Mr Mayor, I think.
Thank you councillor, I'm not obliged to speak more than you wish to. councillor Oris Vary?
No, thanks.
Thank you for that too. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Patterson?
I must admit before councillor Devaney's description there, I was a little bit confused about what it all meant, but now I'm totally confused, I'm going to move here and then move to the next.
Thank you councillor. Now, I think we fully understand what it all means, any other councillor wishing to comment against this motion? For the motion? Back to you councillor Jiven Eddy for some.
No, I don't have any more discussion, Mr Mayor.
Some luminary closing comments potentially?
No, not at this point.
No, do you want to clarify anything for councillor? Good, marvellous, thank you.
I'll clarify with councillor Patterson later.
Yes. All in favour of the motion councillors? Against? Item nine point five, the instrument of delegation to the chief executive officer, we have a recommendation on page one one two, so do I have a councillor wishing to move a I've got all night councillors. councillor Hazelman, thank you.
I'll do the recommendation, it's printed on page.
Do I have a second please? councillor Patterson? councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, this is probably the most important delegation that the council deals with, that provides for the effective functioning of the council and wouldn't be possible if delegations were in place, the recommendation there outlines the various delegations, including those that are passed from the chief executive officer to other staff in place. The significant aspect of meeting, it's almost word for word what it was previously, but in the instrument of delegation, the contract acceptance, there's been a modest increase from four hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars, I think in every second month we see a risk with the contract.
Sorry councillor Hazelman, I think the, our public gallery card here you.
Yep.
Yep, that's it.
I agree with you Les, microphone all round, look, the, the most significant aspect I think is that as part of the delegation, there is a modest increase in the amount for contract acceptance from four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand and every second month we get a listing here of the, the contracts and tenders that are passing through the, the system and we can see the impact that this change in the delegation will have, we'll often see works that are delayed, we'll often see a contract that is held up waiting for a council meeting, it's a relatively small number and I think if we look at this in comparison with other councils, it's a, it's a council decision based on the needs of individual councils, I noticed that, I think it was the city of Ballarat or Geelong, their contractual amount was a million dollars, another council was at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I think what this also does, it also reflects the nature of the relationship between the CEO and the council as a group and the changes that have been suggested and recommended in this motion will impact and improve and enhance the performance of the council.
Well said, thank you councillor. councillor Patterson?
Yes, councillor Hazelman summarised it pretty well, I know Geelong is one point two million, it's basically a way with the amount of governance that council needs on issues, especially contracts, it's, it's very easy to have a contract that hangs around, hangs around, hangs around and then if it just misses that mark, it's got to hang around another month to go to the government, to a monthly meeting, this way we can make it all flow, that's what works, it has worked previously, it's been a lot higher than the five hundred thousand of previous CEOs and I'm very confident that, and as councillor says, it speaks of the relationship between the staff and the councillors, we still have the option, all this money has to be in the budget, has to be okay in the budget, so it's a matter of just ticking it, it's easier to say we can drop to five hundred thousand because then we, we can really make sure the CEO is not wasting money, all he's doing is making it work slow, making the whole council work slow, so I totally support it.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Abdullah?
Um, yep, I would be supporting this motion, it's, it's a minor change in terms of the delegation amount from four hundred K to five hundred K, basically as everybody has highlighted, that this is going to reduce decision-making cycle time, so better efficiency in, in, in decision-making. Also, the monitoring and control structures have to be in place to ensure that this delegation is not misused and we do have those structures and processes in place. Personally, based on, on my last one year's experience, I, between the CEO and councillor relationship, I am very confident, I have not seen any instances where this authority has been misused or transgressed, compromised, so I'm confident that this delegation will not have any adverse effect and I, and there's a trust and confidence and I think there's a step forward to bringing efficiency in, in operations, it's a very modest change, so I'll be supporting that motion.
Thank you councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against? For the motion? councillor Oris Vary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, uh, look, it, I've heard the comments from my fellow councillors and ultimately issues like this, we've heard comments that other councils have a higher value, some have a lower value, that really doesn't concern me, I don't make decisions based upon what the status quo is with other councils, I make decisions based upon what I think is right and what makes, that passes the sniff test and the sniff test is rolled up in the fact that there has to be an element of trust, trust, confidence, it's only, it's, some would say, well, it's only a hundred thousand dollars, yes, but to the rate payer out there, they'd want to know, well, we're going upwards and, you know, the argument that we're going to make things a lot smoother, well, I don't necessarily agree with that because I've been at council for four years and I know that, actually five years now, but actually I can say that council process is still laboriously slow, laboriously slow and that's something that we need to work on, we get bogged down in the red tape and we get drowned in it, so got to give the CEO every opportunity to turn that around because we can say that people wait extra time for contracts, but, you know, I could reel off half a dozen which haven't have sort of really moved along even with the delegation that we've got at the moment, so let's hope with a leap of faith it's going to change. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Against the motion councillors, anyone wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? councillor Summer?
Uh, yeah, I will agree with councillor Hazelman's opening comments that it is a very important document, I'm not a hundred per cent sure that it's a necessity for us to increase the delegation, I remember it was around this time with our last council that we increased the delegation to three quarters of a million dollars for the last CEO and I remember also moving to reduce that allocation to four hundred thousand a little later on and the reasoning behind that was to pull back and to give us some control over these financials and to really make sure we've got the finger on the pulse. I actually think it's our role as, as elected officials to make sure that anything over a hu, four hundred thousand is brought to our attention for a decision, I don't think that that is unreasonable. We hear from previous councillor Gunner Ryan about the old days when councillors were up until midnight ticking off all of the decisions, no matter how small they were, now, I'm not saying we need to go back to that, but I do think that we need to remember that there should be a balance and I will vote for this and time will tell if we made the right decision.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to add comment against the motion? For the motion? Back to you councillor Hazelman, any closing comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, look, there was one word that councillor Patterson said which also almost encapsulates the whole discussion, he talked about the budget and the budget authorises all of our expenditure, we can't do anything without an approved budget.
Correct.
And to implement that budget, there's a range of delegations at various staffing levels right throughout the organisation and we see on a regular basis, the documentation comes through the council meeting, we see what has been spent, how it's been spent and in a few minutes' time, we're going to get a report in relation to where our first quarter financials are, all of that sort of thing, so we do have our fingers on the pulse. And that's not enough though, there's also a very formal review process, in fact, there's two, there's an internal audit process and an external audit process, the council's internal audit has four independent and quite significant members of our community sit on that, that audit and they sit on that audit and they review, monitor and oversight all of our operations. And on top of that, the external auditor is the Victorian Auditor General, they go through our reports with a fine toothed cane.
They do.
Any suggestion of irregularity in propriety would be picked up in all of those processes, but it also means this, through this instrument of delegation, we can review this at any given time, if there was any opportunity that we thought, yeah, look, we could do this a little bit better, we have the opportunity to bring it back, have another look at it and vary the delegation demands.
Well said councillor, thank you very much. All in favour councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.6 councillors, the instrument of delegation, sorry, members of staff and development hearings panel, we have a recommendation on page 116. Sorry, 115 and 116. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion in respect to item 9.6? councillor O'Keefe, thank you.
Mister mayor, on instrument of delegation, members of staff and development hearing panel, as recommended on page 115 as a motion.
And 116.
Sorry, and 116.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor Patterson? councillor O'Keefe?
It's just to pretty much follow on from what we have been discussing, it's basically the council's delegated majority of its eligible powers to the chief executive officer, who is then obviously permitted under the act to further subdelegate these powers to other members of council staff. Powers conferred on the council under some legislative instruments cannot be delegated through the CEO and must be delivered by resolution of council directly to council officers.
Great, thank you councillor O'Keefe. councillor Patterson, any comments?
No, thank you.
Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion councillor Summa?
If you have a look at the document, it's about as thick as three phone books, it's enormous, delegations everywhere, there's no possible way we could get through every single line item, very similar to how we would approach a budget. We need to have some trust and I am going to accept it.
Marvelous, thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For? That being said councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments?
No, thank you mister mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.7, our 2017-18 Q1 forecast review, we have a recommendation on page 119. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion?
It's me again, I was jumping out, I'd just like to move recommendation 9.7, 2017-2018 Q1 forecast review as listed on page 119, that the council adopt the revised forecast identified by the 2017-2018 Q1 forecast review.
Thank you, a second please. councillor Hazelman, thank you. councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion please?
Thank you mister mayor, pretty much that council's actual financial performance is compared to the budgets presented to council on a monthly basis, it's basically going through our figures and facts that are listed as per the document and recommendation.
Thank you. councillor Hazelman?
Not at this stage.
Not at this stage, marvellous. Any councillor wishing to speak against? For? Back to you councillor O'Keefe.
No closing comments, thank you.
Marvelous, thank you. All in favour? Against? Carried, thank you. Item 9.8 councillors, there is a recommendation on page 122, respective of September 2017 monthly financial report. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? councillor Azwari? Thank you.
Well, we have the recommendation as posted on page 122 mister mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor O'Keefe, I don't know why I keep looking at you Kim, but councillor O'Keefe, thank you. councillor Azwari?
Thank you mister mayor, it's two months but I'm back and I invite mister Titezal to give us an overview if he would, through you mister mayor.
Thank you. mister Titezal, your invitation has been extended to you to speak, you accept that invitation?
Certainly mister mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you and through you to the councillors. September month end, the year-to-date performance is actually running slightly worse than the year-to-date budget, if you have a look at the underlying operating result. This is however a timing result and if you can have a look at the full year projections, you'll see that they're pretty much running in line with where we expect to end up. Working capital is very healthy at the moment, given that the rates income is coming in. And just speaking about rates, it's interesting to note that the rates debtors are performing better than last year, which means that we've got less outstanding at this time of year than compared to the same time last year, we're actually $2.6 million ahead in cash flow. Capital expenditure is also tracking fairly well at this point in time, with 13% of the adopted budget spent compared to 9.5% at the same time last year.
Thank you mister Titezal. councillor O'Keefe, did you wish to add any comment?
No, thank you mister mayor.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Azwari, any closing comments?
Thank you mister mayor, just a point of clarification through mister Titezal, any reason why the debtors are going better than we thought?
Not that I can put my finger on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Azwari. All in favour of the motion? Against? Carried. Following on from that report, we have our 2016-2017 annual report, we have a recommendation on page 124. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to our 2016-17 annual report? councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you mister mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 124 as a motion, the council receive and consider the Greater Shepparton City Council Annual Report 2016-17 for the year ended 30th of June 2017, including the financial statements and performance statements as certified by the auditor general.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor Patterson? councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you mister mayor, this is a procedural requirement that our annual report has to be forwarded to the minister and has to be endorsed by council. So this motion effectively is allowing us to forward it to the minister to maintain our procedural correctness.
Thank you. councillor Patterson?
No, thank you, I think he summarized it very well.
Do I have anyone wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillors wishing to contribute comments for the motion? No, I'll just simply say it's important to note that it's all certified by the auditor general, so that's something that is very important. That being said, back to you councillor Jevanetti, any closing comments?
No mister mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All in favour of the motion? councillor against? None, thank you. Motion carried. Item 9.10, our appointment to. Of course you did. You have. You can leave the room councillor Hazelman and hopefully we won't forget to call you back. And that gets spun bird out there. Thank you councillors. Item 9.10, we have a recommendation on page 127, it's the appointment to Shepparton Racecourse and Recreation Reserve Committee of Management, there's a recommendation, do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion please? councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you mister mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation, appointment to Shepparton Racecourse and Recreation Reserve Committee of Management, 9.10 as listed on 127, sorry, page 127, that the council, recommendation being that the council endorse the appointment of councillor Adam as the chairperson to the Shepparton Racecourse and Recreation Reserve Committee of Management for a period of three years, expiring on the 6th of October 2020.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor Patterson? councillor O'Keefe?
I think it's very self-explanatory, mister mayor, that you've actually taken this position and I congratulate you on that and I'm sure there's a bit of work to be done and good to you for taking that position.
Thank you. councillor Patterson?
Oh yes, our position's for October 6th, 2020, so that's a good three-year term you'll have there. It is your position as councillor, so definitely wanted someone from the council to chair it council if you'll be on the motion.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Should I ask myself that question? Councillors wishing to speak for? No? Back to you councillor O'Keefe?
No closing comments.
All in favour? Against? Carried. councillor Azwari, would you like to call councillor Hazelman back please, unless the next item is the one that, no, that's fine, yeah, cool. Thank you councillor. Now, item 9.12, 2017-2018 Christmas arrangements, we have a recommendation on page 131, do I have a councillor wishing to move?
I think you missed one mister mayor, I'm on page 129. Item 9.1.
Two pages stuck together, sorry councillor. The ordinary council meeting dates, yes, sorry, page 129, we have a recommendation there in respect to that. Subject, do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? councillor Sutton, thank you. What would you like to move councillor Sutton?
I'll move the recommendation on page 129, that council resolve, no ordinary council meeting be held during January 2018, the ordinary council meeting cycle will be resumed on Tuesday the 20th of February 2018.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor Azwari? councillor Sutton?
This has been the practice over many years, that we have no meeting in January and the meeting cycle to resume in February, so ordinary council meetings are held once per month, currently on the third Tuesday, and the last ordinary meeting for 2017 will be the 19th of December. And as in previous years, it's just the same, what we're doing here is just having January off because lots of places close down over January, staff take leave etcetera, so it's, and we have a holiday, so it's good all round.
Thank you. councillor Azwari?
Thank you mister mayor, there one additional thing that still exists is that if we need to have a special council meeting, we can to discuss any urgent business.
Thank you for pointing that out, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion?
Yes mister mayor, I'll offer my annual token opposition to this. I just don't think it is a particularly good look that effectively for two months, we're not going to meet. And I know it's been said that January is traditionally a fairly quiet month, but from memory in the last couple of years, we've been required to hold a special meeting in January because there has been business that needed to be dealt with. Holding a special meeting isn't necessarily the answer to everything that we need because at a special meeting, the only items that can be discussed are those items that are on the agenda unless with the agreement of other items can be introduced, only with the agreement of all councillors. So it's a limiting, restricting structure. My preference would always have been that we schedule an ordinary meeting of council in the January, it might be a very short meeting, it might have very little business, but it provides a great deal more flexibility than the fallback position of holding a, having a special meeting.
Thank you councillor Hazelman for that. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Against? councillor Sutton, any closing comments?
No.
All in favour? Against? Why did I put my hand? Motion carried, thank you. Item 9.12, Christmas arrangements, I was ahead of myself before, we have a recommendation on page 131. Do I have a councillor wishing to move? councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you mister mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 131 as a motion, that the council resolve to close council offices at 3pm on Friday the 22nd of December 2017 and reopen at 8.15am on Tuesday the 2nd of January 2018.
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor Abdullah? councillor Jevanetti?
As what normally happens at this period of time, council offices are closed generally for this period of time to allow staff to have a break over the Christmas period and I think what we're doing is following on from previous decisions that have been made council in relation to closing the office.
Thank you. councillor Abdullah, any comments?
It's a pretty straightforward motion, most of the businesses and most of the organisation utilise this shutdown period, 10 days, so I think that's, I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Patterson?
Just to remind that there's a skeleton staff operating for emergencies, so if anyone has any issue, just give your council number and we'll be direct to the relevant person.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For? Back to you councillor Jevanetti?
councillor Patterson hit the nail on the head then, saying that there will be emergency staff available if members of the community need it.
Good, thank you. All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Now, item 10.1, Australia Day Grants, 2017, there is a recommendation on page 133 councillors, do we have anyone wishing to move a motion? councillor Azwari?
Thank you mister mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page 133 in relation to the Australia Day grants.
Have a second please? councillor O'Keefe? councillor Azwari?
Thank you mister mayor, this is self-explanatory in a lot of ways, that it's councils giving the opportunity for various small communities around the Greater Shepparton area, funding to celebrate Australia Day, a truly important day, and I can't but help reflect on the absurdity of some of our fellow councils around the country that have tried to demean this. I think Australia Day is critical, as a longstanding councillor attending the Durkey Australia Day celebrations, it in fact is a fantastic day to see like-minded community people getting out there and enjoying and celebrating the essence of what Australia Day is all about and I long and hope that it continues and that we as a council continue to support it through these funding grants.
Thank you councillor. councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, I absolutely agree with councillor Azwari and I think this is a wonderful day to bring the communities together, you can see by the recommendation that the groups that have come together, a lot of our service clubs, a lot of our community groups, so I think really supporting them on this particular day is acknowledgement of what they do for our community and I think it's a great day for all Australians regardless of nationality or culture.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Summa?
I will be speaking for the motion, there's been a fair bit of commentary around what other councils have done.
Bearing in mind, this is about the grants, we are discussing the grants.
The Australia Day grants.
Just so we have that clear.
But this does point to the fact that anyone who potentially might say that this council's too politically correct can think again, obviously coming from someone who has a great deal of privilege when it comes to Australia Day, but I do encourage any display of patriotism. Australia Day is an opportunity to celebrate under the same umbrella and that is regardless of background. It should be a proud day for all Australians, it should be a proud day for First Australians, it should be a proud day for colonials, it should be a proud day for visitors, it should be a proud day for everyone and maybe that's a pipe dream, but I, I just can't imagine someone not enjoying a sausage by barbecue and just getting together as a community and yeah, being proud of where we're at, acknowledging that there are major flaws and moving forward.
Councillor, can I just remind you, this is about the recommendation, that the motion was moved to, that the council adopt the recommendation of Australia Day Grants Assessment Panel to fund the Australia Day events to the total value of $9,086.
Understood. And one of these days, I hope that there might be a beer can regatta on Victoria Park Lake.
Marvelous, thank you very much. That being said, any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? councillor Patterson first?
Yes, I think councillor Azwari especially, he actually hit the nail right on the head, I think why probably councillor Summa went off track a little bit, which we all feel that way. It is a great celebration of our community and it should not be taken off anybody, and I'll certainly have a council or children. And I certainly notice other councils or children to not support it. And I certainly support this amount of money we're spending with different communities around the municipality. We have mergers in Australia Day Committee getting $2,000 per year, 96. Koanis and Rupu getting $1,500, Lema Lions Pub getting $1,400, Duki Country Women's Association, run by Duki 1, $990, and Tatura, the Julega Crown. Tatura's Australia Day Committee is getting $2,800. And it is the best $2,800 you could spend in town. It is a celebration of their community and that's what this is about. I do definitely support it.
And that is the highest amount, isn't it? Yes, just take note of that. Marvelous, thanks councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For, councillor Abdullah?
Yep, just a very small, I would say benign comment, which was that I was just noticing that we've got same applicants as of last year, except our area committee of management. So, it's good to see the continued interest of those applicants, but perhaps it will be... It is... Perhaps it will be good if we can encourage other community groups and new applications in next year and maybe extend the scope to other towns as well. That's it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillors against? For? I'll just add my own comments because I'm the last person I think have unspoken, yes? Yeah, look, those amounts don't seem like a lot of money, but they really assist those communities in making that a very special day. And as other councillors have alluded to, it is a very special day and we should continue to celebrate it. So, however small the amount of money is, it adds to the event and adds to the community feel around that special day. So, that being said, back to you councillor Orizvari for any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and not to demean what Tatura offers. The Duki breakfast provided by the country brands is to die for.
It's the best breakfast. Right, right, thank you.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, he's never been rude.
Well, maybe we can... Maybe we can this year, we can switch it around. All in favour, councillors? Against, motion carried. Now, item 10.2, councillors, on page... Indeed. Thank you, councillor Hazelwood. Now, councillors, on page 142, there is a recommendation in relation to the adoption of amendment C199, Investigation Area 1. This... I was going to provide some commentary then, but I won't. So, councillors, is there anyone wishing to move a motion in respect to that? Councillor Patterson? What would you like to move, councillor Patterson?
Having considered the independent planning panel report, remanded C199 to the Greater Shepparton Planning Scheme in accordance with section 27 of the Planning Environment Act 1987, Council One, adopt the recommendation of the independent planning panel, remanded C199 as outlined in the panel report dated 1st September 2017, to adopt Investigation Area 1 feasibility study and master plan, Greater Shepparton City Council, October 2017, adopt the amendment C199 with post exhibition changes in accordance with section 29 of the Planning Environment Act 1987, and four, submit amendment C199 to the Minister for Planning for approval in accordance with section 31 of the Planning Environment Act 1987.
Thank you, councillor. Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Keefe? Now, councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I've just read it all out. It's been to a planning panel and added recommendations. I'm moving to the... And further moving on to the minister.
Good, thank you, councillor O'Keefe.
Just a brief comment that we've had lots of briefing and information in regard to this. So, as councillor Patterson has pointed, the recommendation is all stated there that I support.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion, councillor Abdullah?
I'd just like to make some comments around my understanding of this recommendation, this motion which I will be supporting. Basically, the C199 amendment addresses the issues of barriers to incremental approaches to development in Investigation Area 1. Now, this planning scheme amendment can only be approved by the Minister for planning. And the latest status of C199 is that an independent panel appointed by the minister has reviewed the amendment and objections as well, and subsequently released a report recommending C199 adoption with certain modifications. So, the council is now recommending adoption of independent panel's findings, of course with the suggested modifications. Now, again, my understanding is that council has three roles. Planning authority as a responsible authority, and then it also acts as a municipal council to carry out statutory functions under Local Government Act 1989. So, the council in its role as a planning authority is required to consider the recommendations of the independent panel appointed by the minister for planning. Independent panel's assessment carries significant weight for the council. Adoption of independent panel's recommendation is, in my view, is the safest and the low-risk and most reasonable guiding. Also, since the minister's decision is informed by the panel's recommendations, I don't see much reason if the council... Why the council should not adopt panel's recommendation. So, in view of this understanding, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For the motion, councillor Orizvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. If it was not for the independent planning panel, I would have continued to strenuously fight against this matter being here, purely and simply because the planning panel has identified what I long considered to be deficiencies in the manner in which the council conducted itself from the go to the work. From 2013, this, for those who are not familiar, planning is the most convoluted technical exception to the exception process which you can possibly imagine when it comes to trying to separate the wheat from the chaff. And to an extent, I felt vindicated by the fact that the fundamental premise that the planning panel identified, which is the cornerstone of council and community, is consultation. The landowners, and I read from the planning panel report, page 16. "The landowners within Investigation Area 1 have felt disenfranchised and disengaged." These are not my words, these are the independent planning panel report. "And both council and the Golden Valley Harvest Group Racing Club need to now work hard and effectively to gain back the trust and support of its local community." I hope that this council listens to what has been put in that report. This fact was illustrated in some point by the fact that the master plan was even labelled specifically to the Golden Valley Harvest Group Racing Club and not the broader Investigation Area 1. If anybody's taken the time to read through it, it reflects that council should at all times be active and engaged and not be creating the impression that they're trying to... Council is trying to slide something through the auspices of planning. I've done a lot of reading in relation to this and other planning things, but I would say if it was not for the independent planning report, which actually highlights some of the things that council could have done better, I would not have supported this amendment going through.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? For the motion, thank you, councillor Summer?
I'm speaking for the motion. As you all know, I have objected along the way in this process. I didn't think that our approach would hold over at VCAT considering most of our decisions were based on a flood study that was very new. We hadn't finished the flood study and it hadn't been cross-checked or endorsed by the relevant bodies. And that was the basis of the decision-making. So, I'm thankful now that it has gone to a panel and that's the panel that's going to be advising the minister. And they have somewhat agreed that that newest flood study is not adequate be-all and end-all. So, we take that flood study into account, but it doesn't hold as much weight as I believe we were applying to it earlier. So, yep, we've had the checks, we've had the balances. I'm comfortable now that we've got that extra layer of liability protection if it ever did go to VCAT. And I'm more than happy to accept the panel's recommendations. I'm not so convinced though, and I'm not sure I agree, that there has been inadequate public consultation, which is something that the panel decided was an issue. Because we have been there through the entire process and I've seen the back and forth and to and fro. My objections weren't based on our conduct, it was simply that the flood study, in my opinion, didn't quite add up.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion, councillor Sutton?
I tend to agree with what Fern and Les have both said because I was of a similar opinion. And I just feel a bit vindicated when we hear that the master plan is only a reference document and it's not to be used as an incorporated document. So, I think that's a very good point that's been put in the plan that the panel report came out with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against the motion? None, thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like any closing comments?
No, look, I will, as I was going to say I won't, but I will. As far as... Look, this has been a very big issue for council for a long time. I'm glad it's going to planning panel now where we can look and see what happens from there. There's lots of arguments in the planning panel documentation. It says, you know, the owner has felt this is a chance. Well, I probably believe that every one of what is successful has been this chance. So, there's lots in there and it's going to where it should go and we can finally follow the process.
Just to clarify, councillor Patterson, that will go to the minister now, not to the panel, but that is the panel report. Well, all that's been said, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Councillor Orizvari, would you like to collect our colleague, please? Now, are you going to correct the word?
Yeah.
The authority, Murray Darling Basin.
Several references in the heading.
Thank you, councillor Hazelwood. Now, item 10.3, we have a recommendation on page 150 in respect to the Murray Darling Basin. Now, I may pick up that error, that word should be authority, not association. So, the Murray Darling Basin Authority's Basin Community Committee nomination of councillor Dennis Patterson. There's a recommendation there. Who would like to move a motion, please? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr Abdullah, to move the motion 10.3, Murray Darling Basin Authority Basin Community Committee nomination, councillor Dennis Patterson. The recommendation being that the council endorses the nomination of councillor Dennis Patterson to the Murray Darling Basin Authority Basin Community Committee.
Good, thank you.
As noted on page 150.
Noting the word association has been replaced by the word authority. Correct? Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Giovanetti? Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I think this is very pleasing that councillor Patterson has endorsed... We're endorsing a nomination to councillor Patterson to the Murray Darling Basin Association Community Committee. I think it will be...
Authority.
Oh, sorry, authority, reading our notes. Authority. The basin plan aims to achieve a healthy and productive river system, obviously something councillor Patterson enjoys immensely. I think he will enjoy this role if successful.
Great, thank you. Councillor Giovanetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor Patterson is the obvious choice from anyone on this council because he spends more time on both rivers than any of the rest of us. And he would know far more about it than anyone else here. So, I fully endorse councillor Patterson's nomination to the authority.
Thank you, councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion?
Can I just quickly say?
You can.
I'm applying for a position of 16 on the Murray Darling Authority, which would have an application list of 150,000 people. But I do believe I'm in a position that I concede issued with the basin, our access area from both sides. I'm passionate about the river connect and that's part of the environment. We have to look after the environment, we also have to look after our farmers and irrigators. So, I believe I'm in a position where I can represent both things in balance.
Good, thank you. Now, other councillor wishing to speak against or for? Back to you, councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments?
Just a closing comment that councillor Patterson is currently representing council as part of the Murray Darling Association, therefore has experience in relation to the Murray Darling Basin and understanding of the impacts of the Greater Shepparton stakeholders.
Good, thank you. All in favour of the motion, councillors? Against, motion carried. Item 10.4, Round 1, 2017-2018 Minor and Major Events Grants. So, with more money we're giving away, councillors. Marvelous.
There is marvels.
Yes. So, we have a recommendation on pages, on many pages, actually. So, do we have a councillor wishing to move? Councillor Summer?
I move the recommendation, it is only on page 154, that the council adopt the recommendation of the Grants Assessment Panel to fund 11 events as detailed below to the value of $20,000 GST inclusive, representing Round 1 of the 2017-18 Events Grant Programme, 1 to 11. As a total of...
Oh, sorry, no, carry on, I thought you'd finished. Keep going.
So, a total of $20,000, still less than the sports.
I was calling for a second, sorry, councillor, I thought you'd finished. So, do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Keefe? Now, councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I won't bang on about this too much, but...
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe.
I would like to draw attention to item 7, out in the Open Festival, which we've supported for quite a few years. It shows how active our diverse community is in our community and also that council is very supportive of that community. So, every single one of these events is going to be terrific and I hope to attend every single one.
Thank you. Now, councillor O'Keefe?
I absolutely agree with councillor Summer there. The list of events bring tourism and attraction to our region and many listed have become an iconic annual event. The Albanian Harvest Festival, for example, now running for more than 15 years and attracting over 3,000 people from Victoria and interstate, shows the success of these type of events and also the revenue that it brings to our community. So, well done to these events and we're so grateful and also willing to support them.
Marvelous, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Back to you, councillor Summer?
It's all been covered, thank you.
It has, thank you. All in favour? Against, motion carried. Now, councillors, item 10.5, our festive events grants. We have a recommendation on page 164. And... 165 as well. Yes, so do I have a councillor? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Would you like to move a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion, I'm not going to read them all out. On page 164 and 165, thank you.
Thank you. Second, please? Councillor Orizvari? Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, it really does feel like we're playing sound court now. There's... These are all festive events. There are... Rupu, the Koanis, Carol's by Candlelight, $2,000 goalers. I won't go through them all. There's lots, Lions Pub, Tatura, Carol's by Candlelight, $2,300 twice a rate event. Over here, there's lots of community events. And again, it's community we're supporting. And this is a terrific way of getting everyone together and celebrating, in this case, the joy of festive season, including Christmas and New Year. And it's to be taken forward.
No, sorry, councillor, but we're just confirming, it's actually the recommendation on page...
164.
164 only. Which one? 164, the recommendation that you move the motion is on page 64. Just a technicality.
That's why the Koanis pub, Rupu, got $2,000 or twice a rate.
Probably right. So, thank you councillor Patterson.
Total of 7,000 quanies, I hope.
Good. Councillor Orasvare?
I can't top that.
No, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against? For? Back to you councillor Patterson.
No, it's been covered very well.
All in favour councillors? Against? Motion carried. Now, item 10.6 is important, they're all important, but this is extra important. Ask of government. Councillors, do we have a councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to item 10.6? There is a recommendation on page 171. Councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move the recommendation on page 171 as a motion that the council receive and note the ask for government for the 2018 state government election.
Second please? Right, to you late councillor Hazeman, you're beaten over here on the right by councillor Orasvare actually. Came out of the top, so councillor, what he did, he went, okay, councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This effectively, I suppose, is briefly is councillor's wish list, that we will put to our local state parliament members, as well as any other applicants who are going for any of the various government positions at the next election. Just briefly, our list consists of the construction of the Goldwyn Valley Highway, passenger rail services, further investment to revitalise the CBD, Goldwyn Valley Health redevelopment Stage 2, Monara Centre, Shepparton Sports Stadium, Shepparton Aerodrome relocation, Goldwyn Regional Partnership Priorities, Greater Victoria Commonwealth Games, and Shepparton Education Plan and GV Link. People may think, well, it's a big list to put out to our parliamentarians to support us, but the fact is, if we don't put it forward, we've got no chance of getting any money, because we never know at any stage when a minister happens to pick up on this document, and they'll see that something relates to maybe the Shepparton Education Plan, maybe money available, and it's something there that they can, a ready, reckoner that they can look at and use to hopefully fund these projects.
Just to alert your councillors, I think we're aware there was some issues with the formatting of the documentation, so the numbers don't flow in any great order.
Well, they add the 12, but there's just the numbers missing, so minor point, we'll correct in a minute's time.
I think I've got most from Mr. Mayor.
You did, thank you. Councillor Orasvare?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a brilliant idea, and a saying springs to mind, asking who shall we see? So this is a classic example where we will leave federal and state government in no doubt exactly what we would like to have brought to this area.
Thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against? For the motion? Councillor Hazeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, there's a bit of divided opinion around the, both the format and the quantity of the projects have been identified. Some people argue that it's better to have a very targeted and strategic approach, identifying one or two projects, and chase those as vigorously as you can. And look, there is some merit in that argument, but I'd be in the camp that supports having a comprehensive list, because then you've got the flexibility when talking with government, talking with other organisations. Often, the thing that you think is the highest priority will be out of the game because of the cost attached to it. But government and various departments may well have a lesser amount of money that can fund your seventh or eighth type of project. So I think if you're looking at the one or two specific targeted type approach, that's the all or nothing approach. I tend to think we need to have a very comprehensive range of projects, and a good solid business case to support each and every one of them.
Thank you councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against? For? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to commend council on demonstrating its advocacy role by taking a lead in preparing the ask of government, and identifying a consolidated list of 12 key projects. I fully support all these projects, and believe that Greater Shepparton deserves, number one, much improved support, number two, enhanced quality education and health services for its people. It also deserves opportunities for economic growth and environmental sustainability, as well as enhanced and enriched socio-cultural aspects of our region. So all these projects are pretty comprehensive, and they are covering different aspects of the economic growth and development of our region. So once again, I congratulate council on taking a lead in preparing this document. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors speaking against the motion please? O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's also important to note that the document was also in partnership with the community, so that we are engaging and getting feedback. It's also reflecting to me very much that we need to work very closely with our MPs, and I think we are, I think we're engaging much better, and I think it's important to continue to do so.
Thank you. Councillors speaking against? None, for them? Councillor Patterson?
I think we've all heard criticism of it's too big an ask, I totally disagree with that. Those people that ask, what should we drop off it? Should we drop Commonwealth Games, Shepparton Education Plan, GV Link, Shepparton Sports Stadium? No, we need, you don't know where your funding's going to come from. We have a very wide scope on this. If we're going to identify some funding coming for something, we'll jump in and we'll grab it, don't worry about that. If we had have gone with two projects, just imagine if they were the GV bypass and the Shepparton CBD development, five years ago, we're still sitting there asking for money for them, we've got nothing. So this is a lot better way to go, I believe. We're out there, and I think, might have been the mayor that was telling me, was talking to Pauline Melvin during the week, and he has potential to be the minister for aerodrome, for lack of a better word.
Transport.
Yeah, and he said, I've just got your documentation, great idea, you don't know what could happen. If they get it out there, let them all have a look, and they know what we're asking.
Indeed, thank you councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak against? For? Councillor Summer?
Yeah, I'm going to mention the long list as well. There was some criticism, but again, I agree with everybody, it all comes out of different buckets. And if the list is long, it's because of, it's due to decades of political neglect. I mean, there are suggestions out there that being a safe seat hasn't done us any favours, but maybe council just haven't been clear enough in what we need. So lists like this are terrific. Now comparable councils like Bendigo get 600 million for recent hospital upgrades, and we're lucky enough to have an independent who secured 160 million for the first stage of the hospital upgrade, but we still need stage two. The CBD has been waiting five years since the first stage for that upgrade, and at this stage, the first stage will be in ruins before we even start the second stage. We've applied three times for funding, and been knocked back every time. So it's disappointing, but this list will put the CBD front and centre as a major priority for economic and community health. So, yep, it's a clear list, it's up to a lot of other tiers of government to run with some of these things, we cannot deliver them on our own, but every single one of these projects has merit, it's not in order, but we do want to see some action, because that's what we deserve. We're growing, we're a growing city, and this is what we deserve.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Well, I think everyone spoke, so I'll speak now, no one's spoken against the motion. I swear, bring this to everyone's attention, this list is pretty closely related to our council plan, and all the items in our council plan. A council plan is a direct, a directive from the state government that says you will form a council plan for the next four years, to set your strategies and direction. So to say that the list is too long, it's pretty much in line with that. And as everyone here has spoken tonight, refining it down to two or three major asks, I don't think has done us much service over the many years in the past, so I think this is a good strategy, and I think it will actually work. From my point of view, I know that myself and the CA travel to Melbourne, and wherever, Canberra, on a regular basis, and the conversations that ensure, are conversations that sometimes aren't actually scheduled for. And if you have a bevy of these particular asks, and some factual information around them, you'll be amazed how things can progress a lot quicker than you may have imagined. So I fully support that. Back to you councillor Jevanetti?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's all been covered well and truly.
I take that as meaning you don't want to add any further comments? Correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item 10.7 councillors, oh, this is just a minor, minor subject coming up here. Shepparton Truck and Transport Museum. I know there's a lot of people in our, in our public gallery tonight that have been for over two hours waiting for this item to come, come to, to the fore, so it has. So councillors, we have a recommendation on page 176. Do I have a councillor wishing to move? Councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move the recommendation on page 176 with the addition of two words, if Marie can pick them up. The motion will be that the council provide in principle support to the Shepparton Truck and Transport Museum project, contingent on demonstration that all other funding has been secured from the Victorian Government, federal government, and private industry. The project has a business case approved by council that demonstrates viability, compliance with council's legal requirements, acceptable governance structures, and warrants a financial contribution of up to 1.375 million, including GST from council.
Thank you councillor, we're clear on the, on the motion? It's as printed in the recommendation with the addition of two words. A second please? Oh, look at that, councillor Abdullah, I just beat you, councillor Patterson? Councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a huge project for Shepparton. We had the opportunity to listen to Mr. Andrew Artis and Mr. Hill when they came to brief us on this particular project. As we are all aware, Shepparton is the largest trucking area within the state, and possibly even Australia. This concept is to establish a truck and transport museum down at Emerald Bank. As a tourism opportunity, it's immense. Those of us who have actually had the opportunity to have a look at the truck museum up in Alice Springs, can quite easily see the benefits that it will bring to the town in relation to tourism. And it's good to see that in the, in the report, that the truck and truck museum in Alice Springs are going to be assisting our Shepparton group. One of the other benefits that was discussed at the briefing was the option that the local group are looking at of putting solar panels on the three acre site that they are going to cover for the truck museum. And the purpose of those panels is to pump power back into the grid, and what money is made from that, and the estimate we were given was between 250 to 260,000 dollars, would go back into the community via a community fund or something similar. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. There are a number of i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed, but I think the motion that we put forward tonight certainly enables council to work with the Truck and Transport Museum to ensure that all of those issues are sorted. The reason why that this particular item has, has gone through quite quickly is that the Truck and Transport Museum need to make application to the Commonwealth Government for funding that's coming up very shortly, so they needed our support before going further.
Thank you councillor. I was just seeing whether your three minutes were up, but no, you're far from it. Councillor Abdullah?
I think councillor Bruce Jevanetti has very, sort of, has given a good brief of the project and the context, and what is this recommendation aiming to do. In principle, I think, I would support this project, given that the recommended conditions are met, and I would repeat that it's, the recommendation is contingent on demonstration, in principle support to the Shepparton Truck and Transport Museum project is contingent on demonstration that all other funding has been secured from Victorian Government, federal government, and private industry. And number two, that the project has a business case that's approved by council that demonstrates viability and compliance with council's legal requirements, and it's like, the governance structure is in place. So I think these two conditions do, do put council in a, in a relatively safe environment, and a low risk environment. So we'll be, I will be, I'll be inclined to support this project, and for that matter, all other project, projects where the council is, is going for partnerships with local businesses and community. And projects such as these, which basically, basically contribute towards the, towards the achievement of our shared goal. And what is our shared goal? We want to, we, we see that great things happen in Greater Shepparton, and we want to make this place a more livable place, and we want to attract visitors from outside our region. People should come here, live here, work here, and enjoy the... in this region. So we do need places of interest like this proposed project is offered, for people to, to sort of come and visit and, and see the attractions that this place offers. So in that sense, why it's, it's needed, and why it's, why it should be supported. Of course, Shepparton plays a key role in transportation of goods and movement of trucks, so I think it's very, this region and this site is very well placed to have a museum, a truck museum. As far as I understand, it will be one of the unique facilities in Victoria. We do have a museum in Alice Spring, but in Victoria it will be one of a kind for, to, to develop our visitor economy. So, having said that, I wish all the best to this project, and I would be supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
I'm in the corner here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I absolutely agree with what's been said, I can perhaps capitalise it a bit more simplified in a few words, innovation, tourism, and economic opportunity. I mean, they're the things we definitely need to look at, you know, more tourism here in Shepparton. It's, you know, we do fantastic sporting events, we're bringing lots of money in that space, we need new space in tourism, and this is an opportunity. So, once we see the business case, I'm really hopeful, I'm hoping that this does come to fruition, because it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to get tourists to Shepparton, you know, to showcase what our trucking, our trucking industry has to offer. And obviously, it's going to be supported nationally, which is, you know, really promising. So good luck to those involved, and we're hoping to, you know, really work well together and look at this business case once it's finalised.
Thank you councillor. Councillors wishing to speak against? For? For councillor Summer? Against? Speak.
Okay, I'm not exactly sure how I'm going to vote, but I'm going to speak against just as a cautionary position, so that people can hear both sides of what the argument could be. Do I think it could be good for Shepparton? Yes, I do. Do I think it'll provide an economic boost? Yeah, it probably will. Can we afford it? I don't know. I don't know if we can afford it. We haven't seen a business case, we don't know what's going to suffer if we support this, what we have to take away, because we have one bucket of money, we give with one hand, we take away from another. We haven't actually seen what's going to suffer if we support this project. We already have plenty of other attractions in Greater Shepparton, we support Botanic Gardens for a pretty penny, we've got the sand project coming up, which is 10 million dollars, we've got moving art, all these things that we already have in place, that I'm not so sure we're getting bang for buck for. Being a private enterprise, this may actually work in, in Shepparton's advantage, but again, I'd need to see a business case. I've never seen a project moved as fast as this one. And I know that some councillors were talking about cutting green, cutting the red tape, moving ahead, and if I, if this was my first term on council, I'd be pretty excited about moving forward on something so fast, but it wasn't on our radar. And we've heard councillors say also, hasten slowly. If there's no business case, is it a matter of fools rushing in? So I haven't heard from the community outside of the people who have an immediate interest in this project getting off the ground. So I need to have more time to go out there and talk to people, and see what they think about us investing in another, potentially non-viable project. I don't know, maybe I've been here too long, but hopefully, if this does get through, we will be very careful in what we take away, and it will be an economic boost to all of Greater Shepparton, and good for the region.
Thank you councillor. Now, I think every councillor spoke, or councillor Patterson, would you like to speak for?
Yes, please. The recommendation covers what councillor Summer was just talking about. We need to see a business case. We need to make sure there's funding from state and federal governments. Until that happens, we won't be putting rate payers money forward. This is a first step. This is allowing this group to go out and chase some funds from state and federal. This isn't agreeing, they can't go and give you a cheque for 1.2 million dollars, it is a start of a whole process. I'm very excited about the potential for this. And what I really wanted to talk about, because I believe it's a no brainer as far as councillors supporting it at this stage, until there's something comes up that says, you know, governments will tell us, we can't do that, that's fine. It's a little bit that if and when that happens. But what, what I'd like to talk about is the fact that in Shepherd and we are such a, a self-motivated group that get off their backsides and they go and get things done. Now, this is one of several things that people in the community decide, like Botanical Gardens. Sometimes I'm not seen as a fantastic supporter of Botanical Gardens, there's lots of other things. Keentstown, and people decide they want to do something, they get up and they do it. And that promotes this place terrific and I support this group 100%. You know, this, this issue is going to come up along the way that we might have to look at, hopefully not, I hope it goes straight through. You know, I just think we're really lucky to have a lot of people around like some of this, this group that, you know, will put their hand up and do something. If this, this gets up and running, it'd be one of the best things about Shepherd and. You know, people make day trips, week trips, it's, it's an amazing opportunity we have and it just fits with the other potential developments that are looking at a present that, you know, it won't be a day trip, it'll have to be a weekend, you've got too much time to spend in St Shepherd and that is one of the reasons why I support it. And the second one is when you look around the audience, I voted no, I'd be concerned, I'd go out and my car would have been run out of drive, drive over.
You won't get a sausage.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Hazelman?
Yep. Yeah, Mr Mayor, this, this is one of the more exciting projects I think we've seen come along in, in many years and it ticks, ticks so many boxes. Particularly what I ticked off on was the governance model, building on the back of an existing and successful operation, that that's certainly a plus for it. The environmental sustainability impacts, I thought was a, was a huge plus for this project, potential to fund most, if not all, of their operational requirements through, through the sale of power off the, the solar panels on the roof. And significantly, the surplus funds or surplus funds that maybe generate through the sale of, sale of the solar power going back into the community via a, a foundation of, of some sorts. I think this really ticks all the boxes, it looks pretty good. On the conservative side from the council, we certainly have been given an open cheque, we've attached a few strings to it, but I think what we've also done is provided a degree of comfort to the proponents, that they can now go to other levels of government, they can go to the philanthropics, they can go wherever they like and generate additional funds to support this project, knowing that the council is supportive if they meet that criteria. So I think it's a project that we should get behind, we should support it and be fantastic for the Golden Valley if this comes to fruition.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For councillor Sutton? Oh, you're councillor Sutton, yes.
That's me.
That would be you councillor Sutton.
I think it's a very exciting project and I'm looking forward to it being completed. I think we're the perfect place for a truck museum with our trucking history and all the people that have contributed to that trucking history will be represented out there, which I think is a wonderful thing for Shepherd and and its inhabitants.
Thank you. Seeing as no other councillors wishing to speak?
Yes, there's another.
Of course, there is councillor Arisvadi, would you like to speak for the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I fully respect councillor Summer's healthy cynicism because I too, and I was somewhat disadvantaged because I wasn't around for the briefing and I, and I wasn't exactly falling about the place in relation to it because of the fact that it's a private enterprise and councillor being asked to effectively stump up some money. But the, the thing that brings me comfort is that as councillor Patterson, as councillor Patterson has identified, is there's a, there's a number of checks and balances in place here that have to happen before we go anywhere. Effectively, council is the link in the chain which starts the whole process going. So from that point of view, I think potentially it's going to be fantastic for Shepherd and for all the reasons that my other fellow councillors have identified and it, the potential is limitless.
Thank you councillor. Now, thanks to councillor Summer, I'm now, I'll have to actually get out of my chair and ask for our deputy to take this while I speak to the motion.
So you wish to speak, anyone wish to speak against the motion or for the motion?
I'd like to speak for the motion. Madam Chair?
Very good.
Now, I just want to address a couple of issues here. Councillor Summer said we may be entering into something without a business case. Obviously, if you read the motion, it clearly states that this is contingent of. It doesn't say that, I'm sure it does say that.
It does say that in the words, yes.
That said, let's understand a few things. Greater Shepherd has identified many, many years ago that we must create our own attractions. Obviously, the SAM complex that we built, that's, that's going to be an icon and a game changer for us, we understand that. The Commonwealth Games, that's also a proof of how we are innovative, as I think councillor Arisvadi said, or councillor Patterson, that's what we do here in Greater Shepherd and say this, this idea should have been, I think, coming around about 10 or 15 years ago, if not earlier. It's here today, finally. Yes, there is concerns, we won't be entering into this blindly, it has to be a business case that we're, we're happy. And obviously the governance model, I'm sure all those details will.
Stop spreading.
In principle, support I think should be given, so I'm going to hand back this microphone to Madam Chair because it's terrible. Councillor Jevanetti, would you like any closing comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, the comments that the other councillors have made, I think, reflect how much we as a council group support this particular project. The issues that councillor Summer has identified, I believe are covered in the motion without any issue whatsoever. I think if we look at the success of the Shepherd and Motor Museum and we see the Truck and Transport Museum as an adjunct to that, I think if you look at the people who are involved with the Truck and Transport Museum, the quality of those people and the ability, as I think the mayor might have mentioned before, councillor Patterson, that they can get things done. So I think we've got a great group who are involved with this particular project and with our support to kick it off, I'm very hopeful that they can create what will be a significant tourist attraction for Shepherd and.
Thank you councillor. All in favour of the motion? Councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item 11, table motions, there is none. Reports from council delegates to other bodies, nil received. Reports from special committees and advisory committees, nil received. Notice of motion amendment or rescissions, nil received. Documents for signing and sealing, councillors, we have item 15.1. There's a recommendation on page 183. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion please? Councillor Jevanetti? Great passion, wishes to move that. Have a second to please? Councillor Arisvadi?
Would you like to read the motion, Mr Mayor?
Yes, I would like you to read the motion.
I'd like to move the recommendation on page 183 as a motion. The council authorised the CEO to sign and seal the following document, transfer of land between council as a transferer and Mr and Mrs Cook, following the sale of 10 Baldock Street Dukie under section 181 of the Local Government Act for unpaid rates.
Thank you councillor Arisvadi, you did second the motion, yeah?
I did.
You did, would you like to speak to it?
I only to say that I've, in my time as a councillor, I've never had one of these before. It is unfortunate.
Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion or to the motion? Commentary, none. Back to you councillor Jevanetti.
No, nothing further, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item 16.1, councillors' community interaction and briefing programme, recommendation on page 185. Any councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to the councillor community interaction and briefing programme? Councillor O'Keefe?
I'd like to move the motion. 16.1, the councillors' community interaction and briefing programme, be following the recommendation that the summary of the councillors' community interaction and briefing programme be received as on page 185 as a motion.
Second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor O'Keefe?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Sutton?
It's just a list of everything that councillors have been involved with over the past month.
Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Anyone else wants to add comment to the motion, for the motion? None, back to you councillor O'Keefe?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, all in favour, councillors? Against? Motion carried. Item 7.1, 17.1, sorry, assemblies of councillors. We have a, 198, we have a recommendation. Any councillor wishing to move a motion please? Thank you councillor Patterson, do I have a, no, what motion would that be councillor? And what is that one there?
Does the council note record of assembly of councillors?
Thank you. Have a second to please? Councillor Abdullah? Councillor Patterson?
No, thank you.
Councillor Abdullah?
No, thanks.
Anyone wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Closing comments? Councillor Patterson, none, thank you. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item 17, no, sorry, 18, urgent and other business, not included on the agenda? None, thank you. Confidential management, designation of confidentiality of information, report attachments, there's a recommendation on page, yeah, well, the last page, I presume it's page 199. Do I have any councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to that? Councillor Jevanetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move that recommendation on page 199 as a motion that in accordance with section 77.2b of the Local Government Act, the council designates as confidential documents used to prepare the following agenda item. Report 7.3, contract 1770, MAV procurement provision for parks, playground equipment, and item 2, report 7.7, contract 1808, Welsford Street upgrade, State Street, Knight Street intersection Shepherd and designated by the CEO in writing as confidential under section 77.2c of the act. These documents relates to contractual matters which is a relevant ground applying under section 89.2d of the act.
Thank you councillor. Who seconded that? Sorry, no one yet. Do I have a second to? Councillor Hazelman? Yeah. Did you wish to speak to it? Councillor Hazelman? Councillor Jevanetti? Sorry?
No.
You've just, it is what it is, yeah? Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For? No? Closing comments? Councillor Jevanetti?
No, Mr Mayor, it's very common.
Yes. Efficient use of our time, councillor Hazelman. No, good, that being said, all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, I think that's the end of our. Yes. I've been, I've been reminded to remind our public here tonight that there will be some barbecue after.